Okay. Call this meeting of the common council order. We'll call please.
All the room fire. Here, Brandle.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Maki.
Here.
Niles.
Here.
Schrader.
Teeter.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council, may please do so. Matt, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record and your reason for coming tonight.
My name is Matt Kramer. I live at 1144 North Watertown Avenue. I'm the secretary for the Jefferson Snowhawk Snowmobile Club. In our meetings, we've been discussing whether now that the UTVs have permission to drive on the city streets, if it'd be possible for the snowmobiles to be able to drive from their residence to a trailhead, make it easier for residents within the city to enjoy the sport a little bit easier rather than have to trailer them. I know it's probably a pretty lengthy discussion, but if we can get it on the agenda to keep the discussion open, that's all we ask for.
Okay. How about if we put it on our future agenda for the regulatory committee? And then...
Maybe streets?
Streets first?
Yeah.
Okay. Streets committee. And then I think the thing that would be most helpful is if you could have some suggestions on possible routes, because I think we're going to want to kind of focus it on certain areas. But I agree with you. It'd be nice if everybody that had what could get easy access from their home to a trailhead. We have a fair amount of trails that surround the city. So, Matt, I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
And we'll talk a little bit more about, we'll put that on a future agenda, so that we can come and talk about possible locations.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dean Horn? Thanks for moving on to the presentation on the Jefferson Sewer and Stormwater Utilities Audit Report, and welcome, Jody Dobson from Baker-Tully. Hi, Jody, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. So, I know that you received the audited financials from 2021, a couple months ago, so sorry about the delay of my appearance here. But overall, the audit went very well for the sewer and stormwater utilities. They've already received what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion, so that's the highest level of assurance we can give that's really what you're looking for on the financial statements. And there were no issues or concerns that were identified during the audit. Very smooth and consistent with prior years. In fact, they hand out in front of you, that's kind of the financial highlights or the easy to walk through piece, so I'll just go through that. The sewer first. Revenues did increase a little bit from 2020 to 2021, so a little over 3%. There was not a rate change, so that was really a factor of the number of customers or usage patterns of some of the customers that caused that increase. Operating expenses also increased slightly, primarily the biggest change was the pensions and benefits. And part of that is the gas B68 adjustments that happened just at year-end. They're not a cash out, but a book entry. But that said, the revenues still exceed expenses for the sewer utilities, so we've got a positive bottom line. The cash reserves did decrease a little bit during 2021 as a result of some capital investments that went on going, but you've still got over six and a half months of operations at year-end, which is very strong. The GFOA would recommend a minimum of three months, so a little above that. And then when we look at the debt situation for the sewer utility, the debt coverage related to the revenue bonds outstanding, you're leaving, you're actually exceeding that debt coverage ratio requirement, so no concern there. And at year-end, only about 14% of the capital assets were financed with outstanding debt, so that's really low, especially for a sewer utility that has a significant investment in treatment plants as well as collections and stuff like that. So, very positive results overall for the sewer utility. Then the next page has the stormwater utility. Revenues remain very stable. Again, no rate change here. It's been a number of years since we changed stormwater rates. The expenses were in line with 2020, not a significant change there, but we do note that over the last three years, the expenses have been above the revenues. Part of that is driven by depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. It's just something to monitor, that if the maintenance costs and the operating costs of the stormwater continue to be at that level or increasing in the future, you know, it's been almost seven years since you looked at rates, but at some point, you may have to do that again. It's just something to monitor as you're going into budget season, which I can't believe we're here, but we are. As far as cash reserves for the stormwater utility, over nine months' worth of cash on hand. So again, very strong reserves there, and that does allow you to have that flexibility, especially if you have one-time costs that come up, you can pay those in the head and so on. And then the stormwater has very little debt outstanding. I think it's mainly in the form of leases, consumable debt, so not much there, which is also very positive, that the infrastructure is going to be able to be financed for operations. So overall, very positive reports. I don't know if there are any questions on the highlights or either of the other reports that you would have received earlier?
Questions to Jody? Thank you, Jody.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work, as always.
Absolutely. Be talking again around 2022 soon.
Sounds good. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to a presentation about the 2023 budget overview. Senior Administrator Friday, please.
So tonight, you get the quick summary. Two weeks from tonight, when we have the fiscal year 2023 budget, more likely than not, Tanya will give a little bit more lengthier summary of the budget, but I'm going to hit the high points here. So, and I'll just take you through this slide deck. The first slide just tells you a little bit about our process, and I know some of you are new to your elected positions and haven't been through this, but our process essentially works like this. Early midsummer, we start soliciting department manager requests, in this case, for the 2023 fiscal operating year. After I get those requests back, I take a look at it, and ultimately, I fashion a budget document that basically works within what I think are going to be available revenues, quite honestly. That is a final proposed budget. That then goes to the finance committee. They typically set aside one full day, and that's about what it was this year, where they have a hearing. They meet with all the department managers, and there's a discussion about what perhaps was a request by a department head that may or may not have been funded in the document I put together. At the end of the day, the finance committee makes decisions about what a final document looks like. That is the document that you are going to consider two weeks from tonight on November 15th. It's a budget that comes up to the full council on the recommendation of the finance committee. What will happen on the 15th is there'll be a public hearing. Anyone can comment on the proposed budget for 2023. Tanya, again, will provide a summary, then you all get to talk about it, and potentially, at the end of the discussion, hold on two things. One, setting the property tax levy, as well as adopting the budget be two separate actions that you all need to consider. On the next slide is, we always start next year's budget process with just a estimate of how the current 22 operating years unfold, and I would say it's unfolding pretty close to anticipated. You never know what's going to happen between now and December 31st, but if things unfold as we anticipate, you know, we think in our general fund, which is our main operating fund, that there'll be a slight surplus. It's forecast to be about $110,000 on projected revenue of about $6.8 million and projected expenditures of about $6.7 million, rounded off. So I would say, you know, this year is kind of a typical operating year, not lots of surprises. I guess with coming off a couple of COVID years, that wasn't necessarily all the... always true of the last couple of years, there have been challenges. The next page is one you're probably going to be interested in. It's the 2023 property tax levy summary. It really is 2022, since we levy taxes a year in arrears, but to keep it simplistic, we'll talk about it in terms of the 23 property tax levy. If you go in the bottom right-hand portion of the matrix, you will see that the total tax levy proposed is represented by a 1.3% increase over the current year's levy. That equates to about $57,000 new tax levy dollars. We think under current levy limit law, that is the maximum or the extent of what the city would be able to levy to fund next year's operations. That levy is broken down into three different areas, and they appear as the general fund, the library fund, and our capital improvement fund. And you can see how the current levy compares to what is proposed. So in the capital fund, there's no increase in the levy. It's still proposed at about $708,000. The library fund levy is proposed to increase by $12,000, which is about a 2.7% adjustment. And the general fund is proposed to increase by approximately $45,000. That's about a 1.3% increase. I would say inside the general fund levy increase, the vast majority of that $45,000 is for new debt. The city issued debt, you have to pay that back. You get to adjust your levy to account for that. Most of the dollars there are to pay debt service costs, they're not to fund operations, which sort of brings me to the point of what we each struggled with, and almost any local government would struggle, is that the pace of expenditures vastly outstrips your ability to adjust your property tax levy to keep pace. That is your primary source of funding your operations. And this might be what's vastly true of most Wisconsin municipalities and Wisconsin school districts, and school districts and cities are going to catch up. You know, school districts, if you read the paper, you know how many operating references are on the November ballot. A lot of them in the area. We're not that far behind having to do that as well. We have a $6-point-some-million general fund budget. Just general inflation this year of about 8% pushes up the cost of keeping your services next year at today's operating level. We don't have the means really to adjust our levy to do that, so it means we have to look at other things, and that's largely what we've kind of did in this document. So, the levy is proposed to increase 1.3%. The next page is really kind of a 10-year history of all the components of what goes into setting a tax rate once the tax levy has been set. And just the very first column where it says equalized value, you can read across, and if you compare 2021 to 2022, and remember, that's the most current year information that we have January 1 of '22, that is going to be used to set the tax rate. Remember, we're always a year behind. But you can see that is a really, really, really big adjustment in the city of Jefferson's equalized value. Far outstrips any year-to-year increase over the last 10 years, and that's just because there's really significantly increased in property tax values. It's not so much new taxable improvements, it's existing and just the year-to-year increase in valuations. The next one, you can look at the value of all city property within a tax increment district, and we have several. You know, that underwent a fairly significant increase as well. We do know what our assessment ratio is. That is a firm number. A couple of weeks ago, we didn't have that number, we were using an estimate. It's just a tad over 94%. That's the ratio between assessed value, which is what our local assessor says is the value of property, and the equalized value, which essentially is the Department of Revenue's estimate of what our property valuation should be. And that ratio, we're lower. It's about 94%. Once you apply that ratio, the next column, that total estimated assessed value reduced by TIB, and the assessment ratio applied, that's the city's tax base that our property tax levy is going to be spread over. And when you apply the math, you can see there's a drastic reduction in the city property tax rate, largely driven by just those increases in valuation, because, right, you're taking that levy, which really isn't increasing much, and you're spreading it over more value. So the tax rate, that rate per 1,000 valuation, plummets fairly significant. It's about 80 cents per 1,000 valuation. And if you just look at the 10-year history of that, you can see that's a really fairly significant drop. In fact, in 10 years, I don't think there's one year-to-year drop that kind of comes close to that. So, that is what is happening with the budget in terms of levy and the property tax rate. On the next page, the city, like most, I believe, Wisconsin communities, any place I've ever worked is certainly the case, we use a system of fund accounting to account for all our municipal operations. If you just page ahead to the next slide, you can see all those funds. There's 15 or 16 of them, and if you tally up all the proposed expenditures from those 16 funds, and I'm not talking about just our general fund, which is our principal fund to fund our operations, I'm talking about the wastewater fund, the water fund, a number of tax increment districts, our capital improvement fund. If you add all that up, our proposed 2023 spending is just a tad over $16 million. That's about $660,000 less than the current year, and the reason those numbers swing is almost always related to capital improvements that may or may not be scheduled. They tend to be pretty expensive. We're doing a little less of capital improvement projects in 2023 compared to 2022. It's a tad higher in '22, largely because we funded $2.2 or $2.3 million worth of improvements at the Spangler subdivision. We're obviously not doing that in 2023. So, the next slide, those are our funds. That's how we fund all our operations. Depending upon the type of operation, is where it's slotted into, what particular fund. It probably looks mind-boggling confusing to you, but it really, really isn't, and it's that system of fund accounting is, you know, something the city's used for many, many, many years. On the next page, these are the assumptions that I think Tanya will get into in a little greater detail. So I would consider this a constant service budget. Our goal is to take our current level of services, whether it's police, fire, paramedics, public works, carry them into next year at the same level. So that's what we've tried to do. I would say I think that's largely what the proposed budget does. There are no staffing increases. If you page forward, you can see a... classifications of all the different city positions, from part-time to full-time to seasonal recreation positions, they're all kind of summarized there. 23s will look very similar to '22. There aren't any proposed increases in positions. In terms of employee compensation, there is money factored in for a '23 wage increase equal to a 3% adjustment for non-represented employees. I will tell you, this is going to be one of our challenges. As you know, we are involved in a labor market analysis, which is going to require that the city adjust its compensation plan. I can tell you, we've sort of fallen behind, the typical municipality has, because it can't react as fast in the labor market as the private side, because, right, it has a budget once a year. So we're behind, it's going to be tricky. 3% isn't necessarily going to allow us to catch up, so, you know, we'll have to talk about strategies from about mid-November on into December. Our goal is to, you know, try to implement something in January of next year. That'll be a little tricky, and that'll involve some discussions. The one collective bargaining unit that we currently have, we've reached a tentative agreement. I got that news today, Al, I think maybe you did as well.
Yeah.
With the union representing our sworn police officers. And the wage component of that tentative agreement works within that, so I'm not worried about that. That may get in front of you in terms of being asked to ratify the next contract, the successor contract, maybe at the next council meeting. If not, it'll be the first meeting in December. The budget also implements that change in health insurance plans that we previously talked about. We are leading the consortium of Dodge and Jefferson counties, along with Lake Mills, Beaver Dam, and then it was Jefferson that is breaking up. That consortium no longer exists. We are still staying with Dean. It'll just be a City of Jefferson plan not offered through the consortium. But that's funded. It's paired with a health savings account to help fund some of the deductible of that plan, and the city's contribution to that health savings account is unchanged from I'm going to skip the classification of authorized positions, talk about a few more assumptions. There is a miscellaneous contingency appropriation in the budget in the amount of about $34,000. These funds are unappropriated. You know, it's impossible to foresee how your fiscal year will unfold. We give some extra funds that are appropriated to use in emergency situations if we need be. That amount is $34,000. The expenditure restraint discussion, I'll just leave for Tanya. And then on the next page, you can see our general fund budget compared from '22 current to '23 proposed. There's an increase of spending of about $200,000 or 3.1%. That is fairly significantly below the rate of inflation forecast for the year this year. 8% in Wisconsin, and it's forecast to maybe not be 8% in '23, but, you know, higher than typically we would see. We also levy in the tax levy dollars, and then they're transferred to other funds like the debt service fund. Those transfers are actually down approximately $50,000. And as I had mentioned previously, our debt service costs, that component of the levy increases by about $42,000 or $43,000 in '23. The next slide, these are other public charges for services or user fee impacts, so we're not anticipating a water rate increase, although it is time for us to look at rates, particularly because of inflationary impacts. We have a factor in the increase in the budget. Same for electric rates. Same for the stormwater utility rate, which Jody just talked about. No increase in sanitary sewer rates, although I think it really is time that we take a look at a rate study. We have done one of those for a number of years, just to make sure our rate of return is still significant enough to fund our operations into the future. The one somewhat significant increase that will affect property owners next year is there is an increase in the refuse and recycling collection fee. Our contract with Johns allows them to make an adjustment year-to-year for inflation. It's a high inflationary year, so it'll be adjusted probably higher than we typically see. That increase will be about $18 a year for the typical homeowner. A little more if you're a commercial property that receives that type of service, but for the typical homeowner, about an $18 a year adjustment. And we just pay that fee, and we pass it along to the property owner in the form of a charge on utility bill. Other charges for services and user fees, we have lots of them. They tend to be unchanged or very little incrementally changed. Nothing significant. And then lastly, I'll just conclude by just talking a little bit about our capital improvement equipment replacement spending for next year. It's set at about $2 million in this budget, and that's funding certainly to replace major pieces of equipment, to fund a street reconstruction program, to fund maintenance on municipal facilities. And I would say we're anticipating a fairly significant upgrade to well number three, which is, I think, as Todd told me, that's the oldest sitting well, and it's scheduled for a fairly significant revaluation. It's a good well, it's got a lot of life, it's just the controls just really need to be replaced, and in part of that project, Todd's talked to you about abandoning that underground reservoir located just to the north of the binary. We use a variety of funding sources, that's on the bottom of this slide deck. Anything from the capital improvement project, equipment replacement fund, that's tax levy dollars of $718,000. We are using some fund balance, which really consists of funds that we previously borrowed, that we just haven't done those projects yet, so they're carrying over. There's clean water fund proceeds, sanitary sewer, stormwater utility, and water utility proceeds from those funds as well that go towards that. proceeds from those funds as well that go towards that two million dollars in total capital spending. And then you've seen this before. It's the twenty-three component of our five-year capital improvement plan. That's what the two million dollars essentially would purchase or facilitate project completion on these last two pages. And that is it.
Good work, Tim. Any questions, Tim? Okay, well, we'll look forward to a more detailed explanation next time. Thank you. I'm kidding, of course.
I didn't mean to be kidding, but you probably did it from Tanya, so.
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments? Move on to tonight's consent agenda. Elder woman, Blair, please.
Honorable mayor, council members, and citizens. City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, Resolution Number Fifty-Two. It resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for November first, 2022, is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for November 2022 in the amounts of three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and ten cents. Payable summary for October 21st, 2022 in the amounts of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and sixty-one cents. Council minutes from October 18th, 2022 of the common council. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. A Class B license for name change for Pailvar Barley to Bar and Grill LLC and the operator's license. I would so move.
Has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elderwoman Lars. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of tonight's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and off your post.
Elderwoman Brandl.
Hi.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number Fifty-Three, a resolution authorizing amendments to a three-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar redevelopment authority of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, variable rate demand redevelopment revenue bond series 2010 from Kendall Packaging and Corporate Project issued on October 14th, 2010. Elderwoman Lars, please.
Thank you, mayor. Fellow council member, citizens of Jefferson, city of Jefferson, Resolution Number Fifty-Three. Whereas a resolution adopted in October 26, 2022 by the redevelopment authorities of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, the authority authorized amendments to the three-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar redevelopment authority of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, variable rate demand redevelopment revenue bond series 2010. Kendall Packaging Corporation project, the bonds, which were issued on October 14th, 2010 for the purpose of financing a project on behalf of Kendall Packaging Corporation, a Delaware corporation, a borrower consisting of an expansion of equipment of its manufacturing facility located at 707 North Parkway Street in the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin. And whereas the recommendation, recommended policies of the authority requires that the common council of the city approve the amendment of the bonds. And whereas the bonds will not be a general obligation or indebtedness of the authority within the meaning of the state's constitutional provision or statutory limitation and will not constitute or give rise to culinary liability of the authority or change against the authorities or the city's general credit or city's tax powers, which shall be payable solely from the payments of other revenues derived from the borrowers as described in the authority's resolution. And whereas it is hereby found and determined by, to be in the best interest of the city, that furtherens the authorities' redevelopment objectives for the authority to proceed it with amended of the bonds. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, as follows Section One, approval of the amendment of the bonds by the authority is hereby approved. Section Two, amendment of the bonds, the authority shall proceed to amend the bonds in form and upon terms set forth in the First Amendment to ensure of the trust to be entered into the authority of the BMO Harris Bank and a as trustee and consented to by the borrower of the BMO Harris Bank and a as the original purchaser. I so move.
Has been moved. Is there a second? Second. I'm sorry, who was that?
Good.
Elderwoman Blair's second. Any discussion? Tim, you want to give us a brief summary of this, please?
Yeah, I will. There's a few of you old timers that actually were around in 2010 that probably remember when these bonds were issued, myself included. So for those of you that were not, what happened is Kendall Packaging, a longtime, really good employer, corporate neighbor in the city, wanted to expand their plant, install some new equipment. The cost of that project was approximately three-point-seven million dollars. They asked the city to consider being the conduit issue or of industrial development bonds. And the reason that they would do that is that they would be the beneficiary of the income tax exemption. So the bonds that basically would be sold, whoever buys the paper, they don't pay federal income tax on the interest earnings. And so they're more at a cheaper rate of interest. With these particular bonds, the city was able to make them double taxed exempt, scarce as hen's teeth. There's not a lot of double tax exempt debt that can be issued out there. But they were also exempt from state income tax, so the interest rate would be even better. So we're the conduit issue of, issuer of the bonds that made those tax exemptions eligible, basically, in a nutshell. So the way they got the second tax exemption is the redevelopment authority had to make a finding of the land, which they did because they had a really odd-shaped lot. And to facilitate the expansion of the existing plant, they had to sell the property from Co-op to make that happen. Anyway, we had the opinion of our bond council, Coros and Brady, that they would be double taxed exempt. So the bonds were issued. There wasn't a public offering. Kendall Packaging essentially negotiated the sale of the bonds with its bank, which at that time was Eminati Bank, which subsequently they've been absorbed by BMO Harris. So the one key thing I think is that these bonds were variable rate bonds. They still carry an interest rate, just lower than they could go down the street and borrow at the bank. Variable rate meaning that the interest rate, you know, would continually change based on some index. So the two changes that are being really requested tonight, and I think you have maybe a redline version in your packet of this, are the most significant is the index which historically was used to set the interest rate is a standard called LIBOR. It's a fancy acronym. That no longer is used. It fell into disfavor and it has been replaced by another index with a fancy acronym called SOFR. That is the new standard. So that is the significant change is recognizing this SOFR index to replace LIBOR. They can't make that change because we were the conduit issue of the bonds unless the RBA and they granted their approval at their meeting last week, Wednesday morning. And the city councils basically via resolution approved the changes. So how to set the interest rate was the most significant change. The second one is they want to replace and name a new trustee. When the original bonds were issued, the main trustee was US Bank Trust Company. BMO Harris wants the trustee to be BMO Harris. And that really isn't a conflict of interest because the trustee acts on the benefit of the people that hold the debt or the people that hold the paper. So we don't think that is a significant change. In any event, I asked our bond council to review this matter. They have, I think, maybe I put a copy of the email in your packet. They don't see any problems. These things kind of typically happen somewhat frequently. And I think the most important thing that I can probably relay to you, if things really go bad, something catastrophic happens and there's a default on the repayment of these bonds, the city is not on the hook to repay them. We're just the conduit issue or for Kendall to get the tax exemptions. And I want to say when we were discussing this with Linda Templin, I thought she said the savings to Kendall was about thirty percent in interest payments. And these were twenty-year bonds, so these were too thin. We're not there yet. They go to about twenty, thirty, so there's still some debt that they're going to have to service, but without getting into the weeds too much on this, that's the reason for the changes that the council have passed by Kendall and BMO Harris.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Tim? Oh, okay. We'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution Number Fifty-Three, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and off your post.
Elderwoman Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Blair.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number Fifty-Four, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement continuing the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium. Elderwoman Brandl, please.
Honorable mayor, fellow council members, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Fifty-Four. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves an intergovernmental agreement continuing the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium and authorizes the city administrator and/or mayor to execute said intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the City of Jefferson. I would so move.
Has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elderwoman Maki. And, Tim, I'm going to go back to you.
Sure. This one, I know you have a redline version in your packet. It's rather not very easy to read, to be honest. And this is really more of a housekeeping thing. So the consortium has been around for a long time. I think it's not quite twenty years, but it's getting close. It operated under kind of an agreement that really hadn't been updated for some period of time. And currently, all the municipal governments in Jefferson County, I think, are members of the consortium. Deb Reimble, who you met, is the executive director of the consortium. What really has changed and which our agreement really has never been updated to reflect is that we now have a somewhat private, semi-quasi-autonomous, nonprofit organization called Thrive that works with economic development. And the consortium and Thrive overlap, quite frankly. And so the agreement that has been redlined and updated essentially recognizes both and basically allows both to participate together. So for instance, there is a executive body that's comprised of the chairperson and the vice-chairperson of the consortium and chairperson and the vice-chairperson of Thrive plus the county administrator. That's the executive committee to make any quick decisions that would need to be made because the Thrive group and the consortium really want to. So, but that's an example of one change. I would have to say, if you've read it, the rest of the changes really, really aren't very significant. I didn't answer the question. Excuse you for a minute.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Tim?
Who is, I mean, who are the people that are involved with this project?
For the most part, it's private industry. They give a lot of money, banks, manufacturers, and they give that money so that common effort can be made to economic development-related matters like employee training, how to increase the number of employees that are available to employers in the county. Most are manufacturers, so Nestle, Generex, companies like that would be members of Thrive. I don't know that they have any board members. I think their board is about, not on the board, I think it's about maybe twelve people. A lot of banks, almost every bank in the county, I think, is represented on the Thrive boards. But most of the funding for that organization, and we're kind of talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, is contributed by those private entities. And up until recently, it used to be Dodge County, but they left. They used to be a part of Thrive and now it's pretty much just Jefferson.
Okay. Thank you.
I can give you an idea. Thrive Education, Fire, Board of Directors, David Schrader, President and Owner of Thermotech Mechanical Insolations. Vice Chair is Brian Knox, President of W.D. Horton Sons. Secretary Treasurer is Casey Malcivich, President of Surefire Incorporated. Paul Ambrose, Interim Dean of UW Whitewater. Tina Crave, President of Greater Wisconsin Water Town Community Health Foundation. Tom Daner, Executive Vice President, Badger Bank. Danielle Frauley, Chief Funding Officer for Community Credit Union. Kelly Karpinski, Economic and Workforce Development Business Representative from Maureen Park Technical College. Richard Kettington, CEO of Water Town Regional Medical Center. Rebecca Housman, La Meyer, City Manager of Ford Atkinson. Don Lunak, Director of Plant Manager, Whisker. Kerry Martin, VP of Human Resources, Jones Dairy Farm. Matt Mahle, CEO, Markworth Management Services, the Big Board. Maria McKellen, Regional Director of Madison College. Andy Nelson, Consultant for Oracon Bank, Natural Resource Innovations. Nate Salas, Chief Development Officer for Moss Brothers Construction. Mike Wallace, President and CEO of Ford Healthcare. And Stuart Wondard, Chairman and CEO of Wondard Partners. So business leaders from throughout the Jefferson County area. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none? And the regulatory reviewed this and has endorsed it. Okay. Well, and call the question on Resolution Number Fifty-Four. All in favor, signify by saying aye as your name is called and off your post.
Elderwoman Maki.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Blair.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number Fifty-Five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a heavy-duty lifting system. In other words, a vehicle hoist for the Department of Public Works Fleet Vehicle Maintenance Division. Elderwoman Niles, please.
Thank you, mayor, citizens of Jefferson, council members. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number Fifty-Five, authorizing the purchase of a heavy-duty lifting system, a vehicle hoist, for the Department of Public Works Fleet Vehicle Maintenance Division. Whereas one of two existing heavy-duty vehicle hoists located at the Department of Public Works garage has failed and is in need of urgent replacement. And whereas the city staff has determined that the best option is to replace and not repair the existing lift system due to its age and obsolescence. And whereas the city staff has received pricing quotes from two vendors to replace the existing lift system with a heavy-duty lift system, a seventy-six-thousand-pound capacity, with a low proposal in the amount of fifty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars from Midwest Equipment Specialists Incorporated from McFarland, Wisconsin. And whereas the finance committee has reviewed the proposals and is recommending the purchase from Midwest Specials- that hereby approves and authorizes the purchase of a heavy-duty lift system from Midwest Specialists Inc. in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, and authorizes the city administrator to execute any document or contract associated with said purchase on the review and consent of the city attorney. Said purchase is to be made with capital improvement project and equipment replacement fund balance. I so move.
Has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Old woman Tully. And welcome, Jeff. Chief with us tonight, and which one of you wants to give us the synopsis of this? I know it's been reviewed by committees, but...
Yeah, but I'm just going to say, Chip, that was really a well-written resolution. We spent some time on it. Good job. Hey, I just want to say that this matter, if we go ahead and do it, has not been budgeted. It's more of an emergency repair replacement basis. I simply would say that we do carry a fund balance in the capital improvement fund. I would say at year's end, it will be about two hundred thousand dollars. And we do that, of course, because you have things that come up. And you're budgeting your forty-bit projects, so it's more of an art than a science, and we carry that fund balance. We would take about twenty-five percent of it, I would say, if we go ahead and replace this lift, which would certainly be the staff recommendation, and I think it's a recommendation of streets and finance. So I'll turn it over. Really good job.
Our mayor, fifty-three dollar vehicle hoist failed. Actually, the rear portion of it rotted away. I had three people, contacted three people about repairing it. One didn't even want to look at it. One was twenty-one thousand dollars just for parts and labor. The other one came in at twenty-nine, five, just for parts. So we went and the Midwest came in. They said we have these stationary or portable lifts that kind of the way the industry's going now. They're portable. They will, they have a good, good capacity in what I have now. I can move them to different locations if I had to. Like, let's say I have an ambulance down, I can take them up to the EMS building and work on it up there. Also, we have another ten thousand pound hoist that failed thirty years ago. At some point, that's going to fail. These will take the place of that hoist. We won't have to replace that. The county has them, they like them. They were good enough to bring us a set down to demo. They seem to do everything that we need to do.
Good. Any questions, Chip?
We discussed this at streets and finance, and we thought it was a great purpose.
Sounds good. Appreciate you finding a better solution and along the way. Good. Any questions? Okay. All in favor of resolution number fifty-five, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and off your post.
Hold woman Niles.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byers.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Chairman, thank you. Thanks, Chip. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point P five, number one C of the Wisconsin State statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over that the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to hire two part-time reserve officers. I have a motion, please. So... You got those.
Thanks.
Better than I have. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye as your name is called, please.
Hold woman Teeter.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Byers.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Thank you. We will go review them shortly for just a few minutes. Now, that's for resolution number fifty-six, a resolution approving the hire of two part-time reserve officers. Old woman Tully, please.
Thank you, honorable mayor, opperman, city of Jefferson, resolution number fifty-six. Whereas police chief Richter has taken steps to fill vacant positions in the police department for part-time civilian reserve officers. And whereas the open positions were publicly advertised and interviews were conducted with potential candidates. And whereas police chief Richter is recommending that Nicholas Borkert and Alex Alvarez be hired by the city of Jefferson to fill the vacant positions. And whereas the personnel committee having reviewed the qualifications of Nicholas Borkert and Alex Alvarez, and the recommendation of chief Richter is also recommending the hire of Nicholas Borkert and Alex Alvarez to the common council. And whereas the chief of police has part-time funds allocated in his 2022 approved operating budget, and that these part-time civilian reserve officers to replace current vacancies in the part-time civilian reserve officer staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the chief of police is authorized to hire Nicholas Borkert and Alex Alvarez effective Wednesday, November second, 2022, as part-time civilian reserve officers for the city of Jefferson Police Department. The initial pay rate of pay should be twelve dollars per hour pursuant to the 2022 city of Jefferson, nonrepresented, paid resolution. I would so move.
Has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Old woman Maki. Discussion.
Personnel has reviewed it, and all in favor, moving forward.
Thank you. Apparently any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the hire of two reserve officers, Alex Alvarez and Nicholas Borkert, please signify by saying aye as your name is called and off your post.
Hold woman Tully.
Aye.
Byers.
Aye.
Brandle.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Maki.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Chairman, thank you, chief for bringing forth the candidates.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Niles, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, thank you. We are adjourned. Right here.